Make sure the questions pertain to this topic. We're gonna do some pull aside after so we can address that. If there's anything outside of this that you want to talk about, just let me know and I can also try to facilitate pull aside on other things. We're gonna do questions in-house first and then we'll go to the Zoom. So I'll take those first and then we'll kick it over to the Zoom. Please use the mic. I know it's weird because you can't like hear on the mic like it's not attached to speakers, but the people on the Zoom can hear the questions. So that's what it's for. So I'll pass that around. The release and the letter and the other order, I'll send that to the news desk after just digitally. We have a change of run of show. We were gonna have Shannon Kennedy, a private attorney here. She was not able to make it, so we have the executive director of the New Mexico Victims Rights Project, Linda Atkinson. So she'll be in place of Shannon. So we'll get started here in two minutes. Yeah, sure.
So topics that you guys are, are you gonna be covering three topics or just one?
Three topics. We'll be talking about the DNA machines. We'll be talking about crime victims' rights. And then we'll be talking about GPS data clarification. So all three of those. I think he'll mention that and I'll probably hold up the order, but I'll do pull aside specifically to like dive into that after. But he will mention that. No, we can do it after, yeah. But you know what, like it's fair game, you know, it is what it is. But I will, since you guys have covered that.
Oh, you have no idea.
Nobody asked you.
In a.
Nobody asked you.
They put, they put her desk right outside my office. Right outside my office, they put her desk. Just love it.
Even when her door's closed, it's the same. He tried to roll a margin, he looks great face and I was like, you think? Okay, honey, I'll get you back.
Yeah, if we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you on that X right there?
You can put it on the ground.
And then Chief Hebbie, Chief Hebbie will have you.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us, the New Mexico Department of Justice. I am pleased to be joined today by three individuals who have a really important perspective to bring to bear on the ongoing public safety challenges and public safety issues that we're confronting here in the state of New Mexico. And it is out of the work that we've done over the years and the feedback that I've gotten from police officers, prosecutors and victims of crime, that we have identified three specific ideas that we are today forwarding to the governor and specifically asking her to add to the call for the upcoming special session that is supposed to be focused on public safety. I will say at the outset that Chief Hebbie and I and others, as many of you will recall, convened two summits. One that was focused on law enforcement, one that was focused on treatment and prevention. As a result of the conversations that we had with frontline professionals, people who work both on the enforcement side and on the treatment and prevention side, that we developed a comprehensive list of eight policy areas that we thought should be the focal point for the development of a comprehensive crime reduction strategy. Unfortunately, for, for reasons that, that are beyond our control, those policy recommendations were not acted upon during the last session. And while I can, I continue to believe that those recommendations can and should be included in a comprehensive approach. I don't think that there is frankly enough time during the upcoming special session to dig into some of those larger issues. That said, I would strongly encourage the governor and members of the legislature to start placing those items on the agenda of the interim committees so that a comprehensive plan can be put together and put in place for the upcoming 60-day session beginning next January. I think quite frankly, our constituents, the citizens and, and families that we are trying to serve and protect are tired. That we are tired of every year, year after year, living in a community that cannot provide the basic public safety that we're all entitled to. And, and we are confronted once again with recent data that demonstrates conclusively that New Mexico is the most violent and most dangerous state in the country. We are at the bottom of yet another list, but this is something that we have the power to change, the power to control, and we can choose a different direction. We just have to have real focus and determination on the part of leaders in Santa Fe. That said, I am glad to be joined today by these three individuals. I'll bring them up one at a time to discuss the three specific requests that we have identified. Requests that we think are going to improve law enforcement's investigative capacity, improve judicial accountability and transparency. And first and foremost, and, and I think a really important element that frankly doesn't get enough attention, safeguard the constitutional rights of crime victims in our state. Specifically, we are asking the governor and the legislature to consider targeted investments in the deployment of rapid DNA analysis machines and software to aid in and improve the quality of investigations around the state. As many of you know, the current backlog at the state lab and in other facilities sometimes means that DNA evidence can wait five, six, seven, sometimes up to a year before it's actually analyzed. That's a disservice to victims. It's a disservice also and makes the job of law enforcement much more difficult. There is a solution though, and that solution has been deployed on a limited basis in jurisdictions around the state. New technology makes it available for frontline police officers to start testing DNA and getting quick analysis on DNA returns. That's the kind of specific, limited and targeted investment that I think the legislature can and should act on. Second, as many of you have, have seen, this office has been actively engaged and just yesterday filed another lawsuit seeking disclosure of the pre-trial service records for individuals who frankly are among the most dangerous individuals in our criminal justice system. Individuals like Devin Mumford, who is responsible for and has been convicted by this office of the first degree murder of Devin Hayborn. I am proud once again to be here with his mother, Angela Leary, and to give her an opportunity to talk about why it's so important for there to be transparency and accountability. Whenever judges make the decision over the objection of police and prosecutors to release people like Devin Mumford, there is a solemn, solemn obligation to make sure that the systems that we have in place and the resources that we've dedicated to making sure that those people comply with conditions of release is open and transparent and available to members of the media, members of the public. Because otherwise, there will be no ability for us and for policymakers to make the kind of adjustments and investments that I think are necessary. And last but certainly not least, as many of you followed and reported on last week, this office filed an extraordinary writ, superintending control against a district court judge in Doñana County for cutting short the mandatory probation and, and parole period of a convicted sex offender. Someone who had taken advantage of his position as a teacher and was convicted of molesting young women in that community in, in ways that are absolutely shocking. But what is more shocking is that that decision was made without consultation and in violation of state law and in violation of the constitutional rights of crime victims in this state. For those of you who may not know, we received last night at 5:03 PM an order from the Supreme Court staying that district judge's order. We believe in violation of, because of the violations of the Victims' Crime Act. But I'm here today to announce that this office will create the first ever dedicated crime victims advocate unit within this office that does nothing but monitor compliance with the Crime Victims' Bill of Rights that's incorporated into our constitutional framework and into our statutory framework. We are doing that within the, the limited resources that we have in this agency, but we are specifically asking the governor and the legislature to fully fund the creation of that so that we don't have a situation where sexual assault victims and others or finding out after the fact that someone who has been convicted of a crime has had their sentence reduced. And to address a lot of other issues from compelling victims of crime to turn over privileged and confidential medical records. A whole host of issues that are, I think, not highly regarded sometimes in certain jurisdictions and not as well protected as they ought to be. Again, I recognize that these three discrete requests are not sufficient to put us where we need to be in terms of public safety, but they are necessary and they are an important first step. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over first to Chief Hebbie to talk about rapid DNA analysis and, and to Angel and to Linda Atkinson to talk about the other two initiatives. But with that, Chief Hebbie.
Good morning. I'm Chief Steve Hebbie from Farmington. I'm also the president of the New Mexico Police Chiefs Association. I had a chance to speak with the Attorney General, who I appreciate pushing this initiative forward. We were up doing a press conference just Monday on the Niibens machine that we have in San Juan County, which we've already begun to use in San Juan County to try and link crimes that are happening there with crimes that are happening around the region, not even just in the state. And, and we're already starting to see success there. And the Attorney General's effort to get a permanent Niibens machine there, you know, does greatly enhance our prospects for solving crime in the future. But that's just one of the things that, that we, we have in front of us. What I mentioned to him was that FPD was looking to, on our own, go out and purchase a rapid DNA test machine. That it's a significant investment for a community our size, but we can actually afford it. Many of the smaller jurisdictions around the state just can't afford it. It'll be 220,000 base with another 30,000 or 40,000 a year on top of that. So that is a significant investment that needs to be made. And the Attorney General immediately stepped up and, and wanted to present this as something that maybe we can get out of the special session. That, that this was something around the state, you could have smaller agencies working together in kind of a regional collaborative to, to get into equipment like this and help them more quickly solve crimes and, and get more, more advanced leads that would lead to the solution of crimes. So one of our challenges in, in New Mexico has definitely been the backlog. I don't know that our state's the only one. So I'm not just saying it's New Mexico, but we have had a backlog in our, in our crime lab for a long time. That is not going down. That continues to go up as DNA becomes much more prevalent in, in the solution of cases. We have actually, as an agency, started to send material out to private labs around the, around the country in an effort to get faster results so that we can begin to work on those cases. That is, that is expensive. We can't do it in many cases. We, we use it for the most significant cases. But this tool here really will be a benefit to law enforcement across the state. You know, I, I would echo much of what the Attorney General has said. I was down here for his, his committee meetings in the fall where we are looking at different solutions to try and attack crime in New Mexico. We have to be, we have to be alarmed when you see two police officers already killed in the first three or four months of the year. You know, that, that in itself should be rare for a small state like ours. And this being Police Memorial Week, I think it's really fitting that we remember that we, we actually are one of the smallest states in the country and we are one of the most violent. And that violence occurs even to the men and women who are, who are attempting to defend our state. And it does lead to not just recruiting and retention problems, but to an overall attitude within law enforcement of being under siege. And so I appreciate when, when leaders are reaching out and willing to work with us on ways that we can make our communities and our departments safer. And I thank the Attorney General for having us here. Thank you.
And next, I'd, I'd like to introduce Angel O'Leary to, to have her provide some perspective on why it's so important to have full transparency and accountability when it comes to GPS monitoring and, and the data involved at the court.
Good morning. My name is Angel O'Leary. And I wish I wasn't standing here today reliving my new reality, the one where my son isn't in it. My son Devin Trey Hayborn is no longer here because he was taken from us by someone who was deemed to be a good candidate for pre-trial release and who was supposed to be monitored 24/7 in lieu of jail. Unfortunately, we all found out the hardest way possible. Until not only the life of my son, but a crime spree across our city that wasn't, that, that wasn't happening. We found out how flawed our system is and that GPS technology is only as good as those monitoring it. It took my child's life for all of us to find out that nobody was monitoring after five on weekends, holidays, or in all in general. Nobody should have to die, deal with crime, or feel unsafe for people to do their jobs correctly. This is why it's so important to demand transparency from our government entities and leaders so we can hold them accountable. And right now, they are trying to sweep the flaws and GPS violations under the rug and make it seem like it's not a problem. During my son's killer's trial, testimony was given by a court employee that within a six-week period, there were 113 alerts that he left his residence. 113 times that he violated his terms of release, yet remained out of jail. 113 times that my family's nightmare could have been avoided. We need to do better. We need to stand together and demand our leaders make the change that we need. We need clarification on GPS data so that we, the people, can access and understand our problem. It should not take the life-altering circumstances for people in power to listen and understand that our state has a problem. My son no longer has a voice, and yet there's those fighting for the voice and rights of the defendants who violate the laws and make our communities unsafe. We, the people, need to use our voices and I will continue to be my son's voice until we change the system and we can feel safe in our communities again. Thank you.
I wanna, I wanna thank Angel for continuing this fight and for sticking with us as we try to do all that we can to not only hold her son's killer accountable, but to make sure that the system changes fundamentally so that this doesn't happen again. But she also, I think, raises a really important point about how victims of crime in our state are often treated like second-class citizens and their rights are seemingly not as safely and preciously protected and guarded in our courts as those of criminal defendants. And this is something that Linda Atkinson has been engaged in for a number of years. I actually first met her nearly 20 years ago when I was a, a frontline prosecutor in Valencia County. And I think that in fact was the, the first extraordinary writ that I filed in this respect and in this regard. And, and my hope is, is that by creating a dedicated office of a statewide crime victims advocate, that it will at some point in the future no longer be necessary, quite frankly, for us to do the things that we had to do in Doñana County last week. And I know that there's still a lot of work left to be done. So with that, I'll introduce Linda Atkinson.
Hi, good morning. Some of you know me, some of you don't, or you'll get to know me. This has been on my wish list for 30 years. The Constitution was passed for victims' rights in 1992. And they've been silent. And I'd like to say, most people know offender rights, right, Miranda? Ring a bell? But nobody knows a victim's right. And this is something that we in our organization have gone around, one judge, one prosecutor at a time. The Supreme Court case that we did, Nocci v. Pope, was an unpublished decision, which basically said, yes, victims have standing, which means that was a violation of the constitutional right. Now we have to formulate a remedy. And what the victims were asking was to be present during trial. Because during trial, victims are kicked out. Exclusionary rule, right? The offender sits there throughout, but the victims are kicked out. And so, I mean, there's a, the, the right to be reasonably protected. When we talk about a victim being reasonably protected, but we're talking the community also has to be reasonably protected. And all the, what we're seeing on criminal justice reform has a huge focus on offenders. I don't see that huge focus on victims. So thank you, Attorney General Raul Torres, for finally bringing this to the light. Let's shine a light on this. This has got to change. We have an attorney that represents crime victims pro bono in the criminal court system. A lot of times the courts don't know where to put her because there's the defense and there's the state. Where does the victim's attorney sit? Usually back there with me in the galley. And then it is a matter of, you know, well, can victims have attorneys? We ran into a judge that said that. What class of citizens can't have an attorney? What class of citizens can't have an attorney? Maybe crime victims to some judges. So the right to be reasonably protected, the right to be treated with dignity and respect, that's my rally call. Everybody's a human being, and once you become a crime victim, are you less than? Why are you treated as a piece of evidence and like you don't exist? I've had crime victims tell me, I feel like I'm being treated like the criminal. I said, well, maybe a little bit worse, because guess what? Criminals get attorneys, victims don't. So when it comes to, the big piece has to be education. For 30 years, for a lot of us sit silent, and us trying to do those one-on-one educations or one-on-one advocacy on cases isn't cutting it. It is not cutting it. This is a haven for criminals in this state, and a lot of that is what victims go through going through the criminal justice system. You have victims of sexual assault who are subject to a pre-trial interview, we're one of the only states in the country that does pre-trial interviews, and there's no guardrails on that. So that defense attorney can ask about past sexual history. In criminal court, they can't, there's a Rape Shield Act. We had a judge say, okay, not in court, but you can in pre-trial. What do you think that's used for? If you've ever been a victim of rape, it's called intimidation. And that we can't come back and charge defense attorney for that, but that's essentially what they're doing. So those protections have got to be much more understood, followed, upheld, it is the law. I guess my opening to getting into this was, but it's law, why are they ignoring it? I was an idiot. Because they can. So what we try to work on and will with the Attorney General is fashion remedies for when rights are violated, and then it would become more standard that that judge will weigh offender rights with victims' rights, because we're not asking them to supersede the offender rights, but balance them, Judge, you have to balance them, they're both the law. And so I would hope that, you know, what we're seeing here with getting an office for victims of crime advocacy, where a big piece is education, a big piece would be gathering the data. We've never done a study on crime here, as far as victims, victimization. We've never done a study. Why would we? They're non-citizens. And I think it's time that we come into the 21st century and treat victims as the human beings they are with dignity and respect regardless. Thank you.
I want to thank Chief Hebbie, Angel, Linda for joining me today. I think that everyone here can sense that these small steps are hugely impactful for the people who are in this system and fighting these fights day in and day out. I think they've all identified, though, that there is a thread of a broader policy conversation that I hope will continue, regardless of what happens in the upcoming special session, and will form the foundation for, as I said, a new system in New Mexico that prioritizes and emphasizes victims' rights, that focuses on respect and dignity for everyone involved in the system, that holds us all to account and stresses transparency and accountability, and listens, first and foremost, to the people who are at the frontline of this problem. And before we put policies on the table by people who may not fully understand the depth of the challenges that we're facing, they should start by listening and by asking. I think that will move us in the right direction, and with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
Yeah. Okay, Natalie Wattis with KRQE News 13. You just mentioned that these are just a few small steps to take towards tackling the crime problem in our state. How did you determine that these were the three measures you wanted to focus on?
Well, Natalie, it's a great question. Obviously, I would have preferred during the last regular session for the conversation at the legislature to have been centered first and foremost on the big policy outlines that we provided in the fall. When we're looking at a special session, we're naturally walking into a situation where time is limited, there is not as much opportunity to dig into some of these bigger issues. My sense is, talking primarily to citizens, law enforcement, and even a handful of legislators, is that these issues, these three issues, are issues that are discreet, they are, they're having a direct impact, and they do not naturally divide along ideological lines or other lines where sometimes the political dynamics in Santa Fe prevent real progress. In other words, these were picked because they are things that I think the legislature can actually accomplish within the constraints of a special session. And I also think that by putting those things at the forefront, you will signal to members of the public and to members of law enforcement that we're going to start with their priorities, right? We're not going to start with the priorities of elected officials in Santa Fe, we're going to start with the priorities of victims and police and prosecutors and see where that takes us.
Brittany Costello with KOB. My question's about the victims' advocate office. Is this ask about funding to staff that office, or is it, as we've heard before, that there's not a lot of teeth in the law? Is it to reexamine the law to see if any changes need to be made?
Well, I think Linda's exactly right. I think the advocates for the young women who were victims in Las Cruces would tell you that while it's great to have an advocate, we need to have a bigger conversation, and she hit on one really important thing. We have rights, but no remedies. That's a question that needs to be addressed, and one of the things that I think this office can do is the simple fact of working with her organization and other organizations, we can start to gather data, we can start to get information. How often is this happening? Where is it happening? Is it isolated to a handful of judges or a handful of prosecutors, or is it a systemic issue? What can be done with education? And to her, to Linda's point, what are the consequences for violating a victim's rights? We've had a lot of conversations in Santa Fe about expanding various opportunities for people to bring civil rights claims against the government, but never to the benefit of victims, never. Maybe that's something that a conversation should be had around that, because maybe if there were remedies attached with these rights, we would see fewer violations.
Can you explain the decision that was made last night by the Supreme Court and what that means on that case?
So this was a very short, two-page order that came down, and what it says is that the proceedings were stayed, but more importantly, the district court's order of discharge from probation entered in the underlying case shall be stayed until further order of the court. What that means in layman's terms is that the court has decided that it needs to stay any further action in that case, and that the question is then going to be examined, I think, more fully. It doesn't mean it's an ultimate victory for the victims, but I think if a stay had not been granted, it would be a pretty strong signal to us that we might be unlikely to prevail. I view this as a strong indication that there is a sound basis for questioning how that adjustment was done. We don't know yet if it was done because of a statutory interpretation about the mandatory term of supervised probation, or if it's connected to the violations of the Victims' of Crime Act. And as you know, TJ, why the court has made a decision is oftentimes as important as the ultimate outcome. So I don't want to read too much into it, but the fact that we got this stay and it was issued really quickly signals to me, and I think signals to those involved, that there's something clearly wrong with the way that that process unfolded.
So, yeah, so could they have that hearing over again and come to the same conclusion?
At this point, because the proceedings in the lower court are stayed, nothing is going to happen until the Supreme Court decides how it wants to proceed, and that's the big takeaway. The court may, on its own, without further argument, issue an order directing the district court to follow certain procedures, have the hearing over again, whatever it would like to do, but it may, as it has in other instances, ask us and opposing counsel to brief the court, to make oral argument, and have a full airing of the legal questions that were presented. As of right now, that order that was issued is not in effect, is how we read that discharge order.
When can we hear on when the Supreme Court will take that up?
That is something entirely within the purview of the Supreme Court.
Okay, I had a quick question on the DNA rapid, what's it called, rapid analysis tool. So is this something that's being used? You kind of made it sound like it is being used in some areas. Where is that being used, and is it really just, again, the funding question that you're really hoping to get out of this session?
I'm going to ask Chief Hebbie to, he probably has more detailed information about where it's currently being used. I believe it's being used by the Albuquerque Police Department, but because of the resource impact, I think what you're seeing is that this is a tool that may be available to larger departments, but not available because of budgetary issues to other departments. One of the things that I think is instructive in this is the work that we did to get the Niibens machines installed. We had an announcement last week that we have money now for four Niibens machines to be deployed all across the state, which gives us statewide coverage anytime a shell casing is recovered at a crime scene. That increases the chances of solving complex cases. The Solomon Peña case, for example, was solved using the Niibens machine. My perspective is, if these tools are an essential component of solving crime in urban communities, then they should be deployed across the state for the benefit of everyone in the state. But I'll let Chief Hebbie give you a broader sense.
So I think Albuquerque is the only one I'm aware of that actually has one of the machines, that it's possible Cruces does, I don't know that for sure. We replicated that when we started doing our research and went kind of with the same machine. We understand they're talking about getting a second machine because they're so pleased with the way that's working. So we were kind of moving down the path to doing it. Then when this Niibens thing happened, the sheriff's office up there is actually hosting that, and we are going to go forward with the rapid DNA, we'll host that, the sheriff's office will host the Niibens, and so we're kind of trying to find areas we can partner together and address problems that both our agencies have. Then when we had a chance to talk with the AG, hey, this is something we could maybe put forward and could help across the state, that you could do things like that. So I was excited to have a chance to come down and talk about it.
All right, if there are no other questions, I certainly appreciate your time, and let us know if there are any follow-up. Thank you.